Yep. Welcome to the Town of Bolton, Board of Selectmen. Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, 6:30 Town Hall and Zoom. First, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and next we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. And if we have anybody in public comment, I'd like you to keep your speeches down to a couple of minutes, and if it's going to be repetitive, we understand that the first time. So is there anybody you'd like to... Go ahead. Can I just ask if our clerk can hear you? Can you hear him?
No.
Would you mind just coming up?
Not really.
A little closer.
Yeah.
You don't have to be anywhere there, it's fine, they can get it. I'm sorry about that, it's just this way we can get it.
It's not the hot seat.
No, no, no.
My name is Ronald Carbone, 15 Branch Mountain Road Extension. I have three things that I'd like you to take into consideration. The grass has been on the hot river trail, we usually cut the grass. It was started in early last month, not complete. You need to complete it at Tunnel Road, to that portion. It's very difficult for the truck to work its way there, but they usually do it. And then the opposite side towards the notch parking lot. The second one is the Greenway. The Greenway Trail has overgrowth coming through the fence, over the fence, tree lopping into the trail a little bit. I talked to the DOT, they push me back, the town, town pushes back, DOT. So, somebody's got to resolve who is responsible for maintenance of that kind of encumbrance, if you want. The town does the grass, but they stop there. I've been asking and I've gotten no answer. The last one I've got is the signage at Bolton Notch State Park and Parking Lot. I request the DOT wrote a little summary, I'll pass it over to you. And they said you have to have your LTA or your local traffic administrator approve the concept that I asked them to look into, not that they can do anything, but look into it. And it has to do with this. To the customer chair of DOT, I wrote, "I'd like the DOT to take a look at the signage, for our lack of, in the vicinity of the entrance of Bolton Notch State Park and Parking Lot. A driver has to make a sharp turn off the merging traffic of Route 44 and Route 6, beginning at Route 384, enters the park." There was no signage before the entrance to the road to inform drivers of that turn. There's a large signage that turned, there's like preceding the turn that says Bolton Turnpike Manchester Green, next exit. No mention of the state park. There are tree limbs that hindered the visibility. The turnoff is a hairpin turn, so the driver has to slow down, make a turn from the merging highway traffic, adding risk to the traffic flow. Before the parking lot, there is a sign that says, "This is now you've made your turn into the parking lot." There's a sign that says, "No parking this side," and off the ramp, of the off-ramp to the parking lot. Plus the directions to use the commuter lot nearby when the lot is full. But the sign is 100 feet before you get to the lot. So it's not very useful in my thought. I don't think that the sign on the route, also, I don't think there is a sign for Route 644 merging roads, indicating that the commuter lot by is nearby. Now, I said I may have missed that, maybe it exists, but I'm not aware of it. And then last thing I'll just say, I said, "The people commented that they've used this lot before, but it's too difficult to negotiate, and we won't use it." That's what I had.
People don't use it because it's too difficult.
It's too dangerous. It's a risk. You go out there and you're in the middle, if you're in heavy traffic, then you're trying to signal to a right turn and the turn is coming right behind you.
So they use the commuter lot instead?
They don't know that, maybe. Well, people have been directing by word of mouth. But from a driver's point of view, he doesn't even know he's at the turn until he's there.
Right, right. There's one sign that says the park, that's before the entrance.
But it's right at the entrance.
Is it right at the entrance?
If you want my comment, I can dig with you.
Yeah, we can enter it in, if you'd like to leave it. And we've been having conversations with them.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Is there anybody else? Yes.
Just two of us. We're wearing our registrars' voters' hats today. So, we're going to tag team the guys. So first one's for me, and this is just, I'll hand this out. This is a request from the registrars for next year when we get into the budget referendum that just asked that we could start the referendum at 12 noon and continue to 8 p.m. It's in the power of the selectmen to do so. Rational rationale for that is, we have four referenda instead of the six we budgeted to. We need to, basically need to address this to reduce the costs to us in the budget. And additionally, I've heard from taxpayers, they want, they say the referendum costs too much. This is a way to accommodate them. And if we make this announcement right up front, when we're putting the messaging out to the voters, then you're not changing expectations, you know, midstream, the way we did, you know, this time. Same thing is a request that the referendum will start at St. Norris Parish Center in May and move to the Bolton High School Commons Room after school closes in June. And the rationale for this is basically the Commons Room is air-conditioned, and then we won't have to deal with like having 90-degree heat and workers exposed to that for 15 hours during the day. And if, again, if we just put this up front when we message to the voters that "This is how we're doing referendum now, here are the dates, here are the times, here are the locations, it's right up front, we're not changing in midstream the way we did this last time around." So it's basically to help plan it and make it look, you know, look like we know what we're doing, instead of changing stuff in the middle of, you know, things. So that's it, and if you wanted to add?
Yeah. No, I just totally support that, and you'll see my signatures on that letter as well. I wanted to bring another item to the attention of the Board of Selectmen. The communication between the Selectmen's Office and the registrars continues to be less than adequate. Last Tuesday, there was a Windows 11 push that Novus initiated. It happened during our business hours, which are from 2 to 4. We were on, Ross was unable to use his computer during that time because of issues with the download that we had no ability, no advance warning. Yeah, you, once it starts, you can't stop it. It wasn't scheduled to be done outside of business hours. We weren't warned to leave our computers on. When we reached out to the Selectmen's Office staff, we were told, "Oh, sorry, we forgot," and Novus doesn't always tell us about this. It's critical. If it had been a referendum or an election the next day, we would have had to cancel it because we would not have been able to do our work. We also discovered that my computer is not Windows 11 compatible. We have not budgeted for a new computer. We were told that it would be checked on, and they'd get back to us within a week. It's been a week, we haven't heard anything, we haven't heard from Novus. We asked that our laptop be updated, the laptop has been left on in the office. No one has reached out to either Ross or I to come in to update that laptop. And if that laptop and my computer are not updated by September 19th, we're going to be unable to open early voting as required by state law. So we basically have two weeks to get action.
Because we need to use these computers for early voting because it's the way it's set up. We use some computers to check people in and then check them out with scanners, and we don't know what the volume will be, so we need all the laptops available just in case. And the time to check them out before it starts. I think it's, what, October 15th?
Yes. But we have to have testing done, and ballots.
So the 18th?
I'm sorry.
The 18th is still the date?
No, no, but September 19th is the date we need. We work two hours a week, right? So if we can't get our work done in that time, then, and that, on top of everything else we do, we really need three weeks to accomplish it. And that's assuming we don't run into any hiccups.
Yeah.
And I can guarantee you, with Windows 11 new on our computers, and not having worked with the state system with Windows 11, that there will be hiccups.
Okay. With the scanners and stuff, because we've never used them with Windows 11.
All right. I know Cam was in here discussing computers. There was several of them that needed attention for the upgrade.
It would be really, really nice if someone would communicate that information to us. We have town emails, we have other emails, and no one reaches out.
I don't think they came to a resolution as what they were going to fix and not fix yet. Because there's too many computers, need too much.
On another note, though, I do want to thank you for the Zoom link for the supervisors' meeting on Thursday, which we just found out about today. So it's very helpful to have the Zoom link, so otherwise we wouldn't be able to attend.
Right. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
My name is Yolanda Faulkner.
You're probably close enough that we can get.
So.
I'm sorry, I did not catch her name.
What was your name?
Yolanda Faulkner.
Yolanda Faulkner.
Yolanda?
Yeah, Faulkner.
Yeah.
So I started this by calling the DOT about speed cameras on 44 and 6. I'm sure all of you have crossed over there, can see how dangerous it is. We, all of us neighborhoods, you know, we really wanted to find out about, see if we could get this done. So I called the DOT, and they did call me back. They sent me an email that the only one that can apply for it is James Rupert, which I think he's listening. He was nice enough to speak to me twice, and also agrees how dangerous it is over there. But only he can apply for it. This is what the email said. And I know he has to go in front of the board, I guess, before he can apply for anything. So we are here, I'm going to let Ron take over because he did all this work that I, that I will give out, I guess. So this is Ron.
I'm Ron Bodman, I live a two-putt drive. I'm going to give you some handouts of what I'm going to say, basically. Of course, anyone who's ever driven through the notch, Route 644 and where 384 meets notch road, knows all the problems that exist there. Speed is probably the number one problem. Pulling out from a 90-degree angle onto the highway, off of the highway, I'm sure most of us have issues looking to the left when you're on notch road, looking down the highway. Within one second, you have to decide whether or not that car is coming in at 70 miles an hour or 90, or even higher. So I'm just going to save basically the time, the note that I wrote to you guys. The issue. Living in a small neighborhood, near intersection of Route 6, Route 44, and I-384 in Bolton, Connecticut, has become increasingly hazardous. Constantly high-speed autos, trucks, and motorcycles zoom past at all hours, making it perilous for residents who rely on this intersection daily. Departing from the intersection become a gamble with life when vehicles habitually speed through. The situation is exacerbated at night when light traffic presents an open invitation for racing with cars and motorcycles reaching excessively high speeds. Large vehicles contribute to the disruption with their jake brakes, leading to unnecessary noise pollution, especially as they attack the hill. As we concerned residents believe critical and immediate solution is needed, the installation of a traffic camera should significantly curb the excessive speeding, adding a layer of safety for those of us who live and travel through this area. It is worth noting that this intersection is so dangerous that the Town of Bolton has incorporated a no-drive intersection for Bolton fire trucks and town vehicles. Traffic monitoring systems have successfully reduced speeding and incidences in many towns and cities across the United States. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration outlines how automated enforcement can decrease speeds, reduce the severity in number of crashes, and ultimately save lives. Implementing these measures at this perilous intersection will help enforce speed limits and catch violations effectively. Our communities should not live in fear each time they navigate the intersection due to careless and reckless driving behaviors. By installing traffic cameras, we enhance the safety and quality of life for all Bolton inhabitants. I urge the local governments, Department of Transportation, and town authorities to take immediate action by installing a traffic camera system at the intersection Route 6, 44, and I-384. We need to ensure this area becomes a safer place for our families, friends, and who travel through. Now, that's pretty much what I wanted to say. The rest of it is, there's a program overview on the Connecticut Department of Transportation website on how to get this whole thing started. How you guys apply, who needs to apply, and all that other stuff. The guides also include how to submit, review, and approve the process. Municipalities are required to prepare a plan, create an ordinance, and hold public hearings, and submit the final plan to the Connecticut DOT. Thanks for listening. The other part is, I wrote a letter to the Connecticut DOT five years ago about the intersection. I want to know what was a non-conforming intersection. And they wrote me back a wonderful letter, which I included their response to my letter. And they said that there is a plan. I have, and at the very last page, this map of that plan, of how to fix the intersection, which I totally disagree with, but it is a plan. And at that time, they said it would be two to three years before it got incorporated. Now, that was five years ago. Okay, I'm going to ask you now.
That plan, that plan was never, ever approved because it created more hazard than it created solace.
Okay, so is there a plan to convert this? Putting in the traffic camera is a semi-fix, it's not a real fix, but what's the plan to fix it? Is there a plan?
We really can't get into a discussion.
Right.
But I can tell you that we are working through CROG to change the entire intersection, not just, not just deal with that one thing, the entire intersection.
That's good.
Everything, very good way.
And when is that?
Oh, if you, if you, we're talking about an interstate highway.
In what?
Interstate highway.
Yes.
And you understand the state of Connecticut and its process. And as fast as the, as fast as the funds become available, that's when it starts, but it is.
It's in the works.
It is, it's currently in the work, but.
They're working on it.
And that will, it may, and let's face it, anything that's, I hate to do this, but I'm going to do it. But I got a short timer here anyways, but anything, anything.
You're fired.
Right, anything in this process, you have to figure at least seven years between, by the time they engineer it, approve it, and build it, and this plan is being completed.
Are we starting in 2020 then, when I wrote the letter? So it's only two years ago.
Well, they, no, they started once this administration worked closely with CROG, and CROG decided, yes, this is a, this is an important issue, and they've picked it up. And they're the ones that all these funds go through.
They filter through.
Yeah, for us, so.
There's a layer of government.
It's a layer of government, but it's a critically important one. And it's, for the first time, to my administrations, Pam administrations, prior ones, we were not even able to get it this far. This is a huge step for this. I hope you understand that. I know it may seem like it's forever, but it's probably the best news we've had in a couple of decades.
Can I just?
I just want to share that because.
Ain't going to get off my chest. That's what we're looking for, what's being done, and obviously something is being done.
Absolutely.
That's great. We can talk about that later. How do you guys feel about the traffic camera?
We'll have to discuss it with, this isn't a discussion.
Right, period, Stan.
It's just a public.
I shouldn't have said what I said.
We're not even supposed to respond at all. I'll have a discussion with Jim and see what's, I'm sure he's looked into it, and we'll see what we think about it. And we, maybe we'll put it on the agenda for the board to look at.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well done.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comments? Any other public comments? Going once, going twice. Thank you very much for coming, everybody. Appreciate your attendance. Let's move on to appointments and resignations.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We have, for the Board of Ethics, Theodore Lloyd has put in an application to Green Hills to be appointed to the Ethics Commission.
On my brief review. The Ethics Commission rules state there's going to be two Democrats, two Republicans, and two unaffiliateds. Theodore is looking at a political affiliation of none, and the only party opening is a Republican at this point. So there's no seat for, I did look, and he's registered unaffiliated, so.
That is my understanding as well.
Those two seats are already taken. So I can't go anywhere with it.
Well, I would like to ask the Selectmen's Office to please contact him, and, or Steven, Mr. First Selectman?
Yep.
Contact him and ask him if we can explain the situation, ask if we can hold his application on the side.
Take your best. Absolutely.
We're asking him what's the on the Veterans Commission.
He can do that, too.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a motion to make for the next appointment, which is a resignation rather, for Kim Walsh as the Lake Commissioner. She has served for many, many years with distinction. And she, her term is up July 1st, this last July 1st, and she's interested in retiring from this position. But I would like to accept her resignation with regrets and gratitude for all of her years of service. She will be missed.
I'd like to second that with a comment. She has been truly a great steward of Bolton Lake, unlike anyone who, any of her predecessors. And I had the opportunity to originally appoint her, and I've got to tell you that she's done a gentleman's job. And, you know, we'd be hard pressed to find somebody that can do, that was that diligent forever, for that period of time. And, and she's done a great job, and if you go to the lake, you can see how great a lake it now is. And a lot of it goes to her and all those folks who kept an eye on it, that allowed us, the town, to work together and bring that lake back to where it should be. They're going to be missed there, young lady, and I hope we can find someone who can do as half as good a job as you did. Is there any other comments? I guess, thank you, Kim Walsh is in order. Great job.
Take a vote to accept the resignation.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Do they see Amanda?
Amanda texted me and said she had a death in the family that she just found out about, and had to leave the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. Okay, so it's six yes, and Amanda is absent. And now we're going to move on to correspondence. We've received this correspondence from Holman and Colley in reference to a solar array project on Lake Street in Manchester, 81 and 93. It's a six-and-a-half-acre solar array that's on a 30-acre piece of property. We did reach out to Steve in Manchester, and I believe that he was kind of in favor of it.
Steve?
Stefan, the town manager.
Okay.
And I believe he's in favor of it, so.
I don't think there's anything for us.
No, they just.
Notification.
Well, they, I believe it's going to the Sight and Counsel. I think it said that in here.
Yeah.
The property right at the beginning of Lake Street, like you're crossing the church.
On the north side.
Yes.
Church. You know, there's that church.
Oh, right.
Church up on that hill.
Yeah, I think he's got a cell tower up there.
Then it's on the others.
That one, oh, that spot, okay.
Kind of open space.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay. Yeah, I was trying to figure out, yeah, exactly. So it won't be affecting the property at the.
No, it's over by Shady Glen.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So it's kind of in.
Yeah, I was trying to get from this construction, I couldn't figure out where the hell it was.
Yeah, I talked to the guy a couple of years ago.
Okay, so it's that, it's, yeah, yeah, so it, that's near the CLMP, that big right away they have going through there. Is it that side?
No, no, so if you're going, you're heading to Shady Glen, you haven't gotten there yet. Shady Glen's going to be on.
Where that church is on the right hand.
On the right-hand side.
Oh, right there.
The street comes in that triangular. If you, if you go up Lake Street, it's on the north side.
That side there, oh, okay.
I think so, that's the guy.
Yeah, I looked, I looked.
Oh, you did?
I looked on the.
You found it, yeah.
There's properties that you can sell, yeah, perennial sprains, yeah. I think it's the same property, I mean, it's right in that area, and that's what it is. From the area.
That's off, that's off. So unless we hear otherwise from somebody, it's just going to be. Information. Then we have. Karma. With good news. They're giving us money back. Oh, that's our insurance agent that deals with all the towns, and they're giving us $12,680 back.
Yep.
That's worth. Healthy and happy.
Explain how the members equity distribution program works?
Probably not.
Maybe James Rupert might be able to do that?
I don't know. Mr. Rupert has the capacity to talk, we'll.
Yeah, I'll give it a shot. So what happens is we pay premiums every year based on the previous year's history. And so they, you know, they make those determinations near the beginning of the year. But when you have a good year as a group, they are able to provide dividends back to the members that are part of the insurance consortium. And so that's what this is. We had a very good year as a large group of many municipalities with our, we didn't have a lot of claims for either liability or workers' comp. And so when they have the money left over, the Board of Directors for Karma meets, and they decide how that's going to be split up. And it's, and I believe it's done based on a percentage of your premium, so that it's fair, a fair and equitable distribution.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
And then, moving on to new business. Inlands/Wetlands fee discussion, consider an act on a new fee schedule. I'm here to present the fee schedule conversation.
Hi, folks. My name's Alyssa Baroso, I'm the Wetlands agent for the Town of Bolton. And this is Ross Lylic, the chairman.
We haven't done any updates to either the regs or the fees for 10 years, which is scary. And so we're starting, bring to you the fee schedule.
Yeah, so I want to apologize because I had actually sent Kathy the wrong updated fee schedule. So you have two in here, Kathy, currently, the, should be the first one is our current fee schedule. And then this one that I'm passing out now is our proposed fee schedule. It's essentially a roughly 30% increase from 2015's fees. About 30% based on 10 years at 3% inflation. And then the other major change is, I wanted to introduce this line item called minimal impact permit. called minimal impact permit, right under jurisdictional ruling. It's the third line item in the table, um, and that would be for, well, it's in the name, minimal impact permits. So things that are really, really small, somebody putting in a couple of concrete piers for a deck or putting up a small cloter farm shed that's sufficient distance away from the wetlands. I want them to not have to pay as much, so that's why we um, wanted to instate this, this permit, and it would be an agent permit. Um, so that's essentially all of these applications still have to pay the state fee. And then it would just be sixty dollars on top of that. Um, so it's significantly cheaper than.
So paid fees, no matter what permit it is, they get their sixty bucks.
Exactly. They get their, they get their share. Nothing we can do.
No, I know that, yeah, yeah.
So a new application is just somebody coming in, putting in a new application. Modifications is somebody put in an application and you requested a modification on it and they have to reapply?
Not exactly. So modifications are if uh, if they would like to change their project in a significant way. Um, so if they have a house that's a thousand square feet originally and they wanna make it sixteen hundred.
Or they're moving where it's located relative to the wetlands, or they're moving where their septic field is, it's stuff like that that's significant.
Yeah, the significant change from the original.
Not required initial review on your guys' part, yes.
And that's assuming it hasn't expired.
Right, okay.
Because then it would be.
Then it's, then it's a reader, well, they get to us before it expires, it's a renewal. If they come to us too late, then it's a new permit again.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely, I think so, yeah.
So question, I noticed that on three of the base fees, you're dropping them, just wondering what your thought process was. So base fee on, you just gave me the, you just, this is the new one. So base fee on improvements went from ninety-five to ninety. Base fee on residents went from one forty-five to one forty. And base fee on commercial industrial went from, from two twenty, no, sorry, that one, that one went up.
It's true.
Which was the one though? Um, improvements.
That's, that's the mod, that's the modification.
Yeah, I think we, it was originally.
Ninety to nine, ninety-five to ninety, and residents on the modification basically went from one forty-five to one forty.
I think that may have just been so that it's a whole number. I don't think there was a huge reason for that. It's just knocking the five off. So that they all end in zero, essentially.
So that was not a, wasn't anything.
Not to it. Not, I mean, no, I think it was just to make it.
And again, we went back and forth on this and it's, we also understand this is also a political, a political decision too. So it's really up to, you know, you folks as to, you know, is this, if you feel this is sufficient, do you feel it's not sufficient?
And also in case.
To increase violation.
I did, yeah, I increased it to two hundred fifty, um, from two hundred. So yeah, any of the ones that are highlighted were changed. I also increased the um, the legal, uh, the legal consultant fees just because they have gone up significantly. Um, that's, that went from two hundred fifty to three hundred an hour. I looked it up and the average in Connecticut is actually like three hundred fifty an hour, so I don't know, we should even increase that more to the average, but. I also do have, in case it helps, I have some um, fees from surrounding towns. I have Wellington, South Windsor and Andover. Um, if anyone wants to see those, I'll just leave a couple.
Also, we're all pretty sure we understand. This is what you really are asking for, so don't be yellow highlighted.
Correct.
For one, the, the first one in our packet that says six A.
Is this the current fee schedule? Then there was this one.
Well, there should be one with like a little bit of, I guess none of them have.
So this one that's labeled six A is the original.
That's the current.
The current.
Yes, exactly.
And so that's.
This one that isn't labeled, is it, now it was related.
Um.
Yeah, this was behind this in the packet.
So that one.
Are you substituting this with this?
You can disregard this.
Just disregard the one with the gray shading on it and keep the yellow shaded.
Yeah, I don't think it has. Absolutely. It's too sad. Yeah, I'm so sorry about that. I just sent her the wrong one that was in my computer for some reason.
If, if I'm. So obviously, a lot of stuff, um, generally something like this, it goes to our subcommittee to review and report back. So we can maybe, if we have time at the next meeting, then over, because I, it's important to look at, see where we stand in relation to everybody else.
I guess so. I mean, I, I have no problem with these increases. They're, they're not, they're not that significant and.
We want to reflect inflation, but we don't want to do anything.
Not again, no, I, I, I concur that they should be brought into line. I, I would just, I would like to have a, a little more than, you know, ten minutes tonight.
This isn't needing to be acted on, this is just to let you see this is what we're proposing.
That's what I rationed, I seen that's what it was.
Guys go talk about it, come back to us whether you agree or disagree, what changes and so forth. Same thing we did ten years ago, if you remember. You were one of the guys reviewing.
Did exactly that and.
And these don't need to go, these can be acted on by you because they're not actually part of the regs. They're an, they're an appendix to them. The actual regs, when we bring them, we'll have to have a formal review by you. You know, public hearing.
This is just.
And all that stuff. This is something you guys can approve and then it goes into effect.
But you decided, Matt Mas?
Yes.
You decided not to increase the renewals?
Correct.
The one, and it is renewals of the far right column?
Correct, renewals stayed at seventy-five.
The renewals are. The reason for the renewal is if they haven't made any substantial changes, you more or less have to approve them. So there's really not a lot of work to them because if nothing has changed and they're coming in to renew it after seven years or whatever.
And they've already done.
And they've already been approved, then if you deny it for no valid reason, they get sued. So there's really very little work to it. You just have to look and say, did they change anything? No.
That just means they're extending a, a. They haven't done the construction.
They haven't done any work. Some cases they may have done some, but not all of it. They may have started it. And uh, that's all it is. It's just changed the deadline and as long as they haven't done, made any changes to what they're proposing to do, that's, there's no, really not a lot of.
It doesn't happen very often. We didn't see any.
No, it, but it's, it's an easy one. There's not a lot to it. And again, we don't, we don't want it to sway people from developing. We want to make sure it's done.
So from a consensus standpoint, do we want to move this forward to a?
I'd like to send it to the committee.
Yes, okay.
And to report back to our next meeting.
And then we can be here to talk about that, or maybe we'll have the uh.
Have it on the agenda and kind of work.
Yeah, so goal two, it's, I guess it would be like a dual motion, I suppose, to both. Approve the creation of a line item for minimal impact permit and approve the new fees.
To start, so it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Very much.
Which committee will that be going to?
Building committee.
Oh, no, we have to create another, another committee.
It's finance, Danny? It's one that has a finance, we have one that has finance, yeah. Yes, suit for using. So next on the list is the land use activity report that was issued from Patrice Carson. That's for review only. Uh, is there any comments on that?
I'd like to, yeah, I appreciate getting this, um, because it's something that, that I know I've asked for a couple of times and Amanda has also, so I do appreciate seeing this. I think one step further that Patrice could have gone would be how much time she's spending on these different items. Because one of the reasons we, we as a board wanted to see her work was to know whether she has more time in her day or week or month to devote to economic. So, so I would like to just, to see her add something like even percentages or just general, general comment about how much time is taken up with, like, planning and zoning matters. Meetings out of town and these various groups and then economic development related matters.
With that, that, this is amazing. That's, that's gonna be a moving target because it's gonna vary month, week to week. Uh, so each month you're gonna have.
I mean, she could come up, this is a six month timeframe right here, but this is, this is a January.
So you're looking for, because we do it every two weeks, so.
Do whatever.
Like on, on a, a monthly basis, probably, I mean, I just wonder how we, this is how, how we wanna. Oh, do that, that's what I'm saying, what I'm thinking is.
Well, I mean, she could, what if she took this back and, 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 and looked at it herself and, and, and gave percentages to what she's got right here.
Over that period, oh.
For the January.
I misunderstood, okay.
Or just do July, August, September quarter.
That would be.
I don't want to send her backwards because we paid for it.
No, that, oh, I mean, well, I would think that creating a, a work, a report would be part of her job and not, not anything extra that we pay her for. I mean, it's, this, this is, she's just reporting to us what she's doing under her contract.
She's an hourly consultant, right? So if she's doing this, that's part of the hours.
Yeah, but, but it's not, it's not something unusual to ask an employee to show what kind of work ethic she's doing.
But I, I don't know if we want to send her backwards for.
No, okay.
Three hours and.
Okay.
Recreate first six months of your job.
That, that's fine. I just, I, I hope you understand. I hope you all understand the point. I am not trying to be, create a negative situation here. And all, all I'm, I am trying to advance a goal that this board decided on in our retreat. Which was to try to increase the amount of economic growth in this town. And this is the employee who is charged with the, with doing that. And so I'm trying to get at, what are, how is she doing that? And is there, um, is there space for her to be increasing the pace of those efforts? That, that's all there is to this. And, and this is, it's, I'm glad to see what she did in the last six months. And so I'm just hoping to see, does, what, what is she gonna do in the next, what she does in the next three months, I'm fine with that. And how much of her time is spent on economic development? And also what, whether any of these activities that she's doing, are they promoting economic development? Because these are, this is a good report of what she has done. But is there a direct connection between the work that she's doing and, like, are we seeing an outcome for economic development from, from the work that she's putting in here?
Okay, I think that's a good question because so many of these things are ongoing. You don't know what stage they are. Are they, um, something she works on monthly, is something she works on quarterly? This is something she just attends to meet for and puts in, of course, with the meeting time.
It's a fair question, just get visibility of what's, what actions going on.
What's the status? I think Amanda has, has reappeared.
Yeah, Amanda.
Thanks. Um, so yeah, I mean, I just wanted to go back to what Gwen was saying and, and I think part of what is motivating this is what I have seen in terms of feedback from the community throughout this referendum process, right? We had already identified at our strategic plan that this was a goal, but I think that this referendum process highlighted it even further. The, what, you guys can hear me, right?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, sorry, I'm just on some weird headphones. Um, that people are asking, why don't we have more sources of revenue? What are we doing to increase our tax base, right, to increase our commercial tax base? And we don't really have an answer for them, quite frankly. And so I asked Kathy for a copy of her contract today. And quite frankly, I don't, I'm not convinced that grow the economic development of the town is in her contract. And so I think that that's something that we should be looking at. I think it's, and to, to Gwen's point, we need to know the percentages of time to see if that's where we think as a board, as a town, that she should be spending her time. Is her time best spent attending these meetings on behalf of Bolton? Or would time be better spent soliciting and trying to sell Bolton to developers and trying to get people to, you know, come here? Or would her time be better spent putting together metrics for, for residents, right? Because right now, the residents don't know what she's doing, right? They know we're investing this time and energy in hiring this position, but they're not seeing anything being produced, right? And so we need to just inform the public what is happening. So even if it's a page on the website where there's some metrics, right, some graphs, some charts that show what Gwen said, which is the outcomes, right? The public really want to know what the return on investment is. And as a board of selectmen, I think we owe it to them to show where their money is going.
I don't know how far I'd raise that flag, but um, any other comments? Uh, maybe we're talking about hiring.
I do, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna withhold my comments.
We're talking about hiring a real estate agent, a central to, to reinstate agents.
What you're talking, it's, when, when you're, when you're dealing with, if you will, quote developers and this and that. Mostly what you're dealing with is pretty damn confidential stuff and properties and owners that don't want to know. But part of it, it, it's trying to, number one, I know everyone in town wants to have the perfect, you know, eight million dollar building that has two employees. It just generates all kind of, 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 of cash. But that's not what the market says. The, what drives it is the market, period. And we have some properties that are, have become, shall we say, active properties in which he's been working on it with, with a whole number of people. And um, including zoning, because part of, part of the issue, that's why you see so much time with zoning. Is we, we have a set of zoning regulations that need significant change to allow a lot to happen. The regulations had, had evolved to a point where there are breaks. So there was a stop sign, not a go sign, when, 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 when someone looked at these properties. And, and I think she has, one of the things, and it's, the zoning part has always been a thing on my mind that's been an issue. But they've made significant steps and continue. We think there's, the board right now, I think, concurs that they have to make the regulation simpler.
That's right.
And, 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 and so they make sense. And um, that's where they're going. And quite frankly, that some of the, the larger property owners have commented on that in, in, in a positive way. But I think, I think um, within the next three to six months, there, there should be some real significant activities that I won't be here to be a part of as far as this board. But uh, in, in another capacity that will make some significant.
Are zoning regulations handled um, a hundred percent independently by the zoning uh, board or does Board of Selectmen have any?
Nope, it, it, it is them and she, and she has, and I mean, she spent a lot of time in with the chair and members of the board to, to, to redirect the board. And, and, and that's what's there. If you go to some of their meetings and look at what they're working on and, and uh, in, in re-looking at um, some, some of the, the, the commercial properties and the, the way some of the structures were on, on the zoning on that, made it really difficult for some of the develop. Requiring uh, on some cases, residential on the bottom and, and, I mean, on top and commercial on the bottom and.
Unless they want to go to a bunch of appeals and variations.
Well, it, it, it's simply, yeah, the economics don't, don't make it. I mean, there are. And also at the same time, what's, what's looking around here, right? Right now, housing is needed here, a, a, a housing that, that someone can, can come in here and buy. Not at six hundred thousand, but maybe at three hundred thousand and, and in that range. And that's also, you have to look at that. Can we do that to a condo type situation? That's being looked at. Um, and the state has finally figured out that if, they have, components of the state have figured out that if, if we're going to uh, expand housing and, and if, and when we say affordable housing it's in this area, we're talking in the three hundred thousand dollar range. That's, that's the affordable housing range, in the, in that range. Um, be it a condo, because you certainly can't build a house for that, but things like that, that's, the state now is, is quite active in, in trying to support you doing that. So I think the climate is right now that we haven't had before and uh, I feel pretty good that in the next few months, we, we, we should have stuff coming forward before zoning board and, and the town of some development. Significant, so.
With Patrice's, is your point, that, that's with Patrice's.
She she has, she has been uh, in, at the beginning on it, continue and continue to work on it. She kind of coordinates when we, we all getting together and everything. So, and I mean, I speak on it because as Chair of the Sewer Authority, that's an integral part of this whole operation. So we've been trying to work right, work together with with everyone on that. And also with the state of of Connecticut so that we we can work within the restrictions we have and still move forward. We we're making progress.
I know this is off topic and I don't want to go bring, drag this out too much, but I'm just curious because you know a lot about this. Do condos bring in a lot of revenue, like per square, per acre compared to like a nice, like a six hundred thousand dollar house? Because of the.
Five condos in one lot, you get, you get well over a million dollars.
Okay. So it would be a efficient way.
And 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 it does two things, you know, the, it's not only the revenue side. But you really have to look at, if you want your community to grow, you have to have an opportunity for new people to come in, without having lay out a half a million dollars. And and this is about, this is it. No one's gonna build a nine, uh, nine hundred and sixty square foot ranch.
Over there, no.
On a hundred and eighty thousand dollar lot, you know, just, it's not happening. But this, it it is this type of uh, development that at least that's where the market is, and that's where the affordability affordability level is. That's the other key is that, and and you have a pent up market of 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 people willing to able to buy, but it's but you can't afford it. You can't, you can't, you you're not gonna start off it. If you buy a three hundred thousand dollar now, you gotta put another hundred grand in it before you can move in. That's almost where you are today. And that and that's and that's the unfortunate thing, but life, that's where it is. So this aspect of it, I think could be um, you know, and very advantageous to towns, both on the economic side, and we're talking, you know, our corridor is Route Six corridor, the forty four through there.
Which is our commercial corridor.
Not only that, all those streets are 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 state highways.
Right.
It's zero impact on in.
Roads.
Right. And if you're a commuter, if you're on Route Six, where do you go? You go to three eighty four. On Route Six, you go to wherever you're job. So minimal impact on state roads, significant impact positive on.
And it could bring kids to school.
That's uh, my one on one class today.
But but the.
I I know there are, there there are those that disagree that development is costing more than 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 not on residential, but Gwen sitting over there, we've had this discussion years ago, and we continue to, but.
So.
Can I chime in again? Sorry, I re-raised my hand. I mean, so to to Bobby's point, I think that's what I'm trying to highlight, is that you have a knowledge that the residents don't have, right? We have this ongoing project. And so I think this speaks not only to this planning and zoning project, but a lot of projects that we've had through town. We've had many people come and tell us that our communication as a town to the residents is not sufficient, right? And so this is an area where Patrice specifically could create a one pager or a page on the website, a summary of this project, and you know, successes to date or changes to date, so that people can see these are the changes we've made to make us more friendly to business, to make us more friendly to to residential development, so that we can point, hey, go check out this webpage. You can see the product of this investment that we've made in our town, right? And so it's just one example that happens to be one that Patrice is working on, I think where we can better communicate with residents about how we're using their taxpayer dollars.
That's that's a good point. I know all the developers I deal with, if you're asking about Bolton, the regulations, just walk away.
Yeah, that's why.
That's why you have to concentrate on that.
So that's, so Mike and Patrice are constantly beating up on that, trying to make their way through that. And and of course, the people who were in sparks with these things, they don't want to know. And and if you start saying something and the deal falls apart, then who's the bad guy? You know, everybody's, oh, we've got something going. All of a sudden, gone and. It's, it's, you gotta have.
There for reason too. So if you're there to prevent things from happening, you don't want that to happen as well, so. Needs to apply to the right situations, which it seems like that is a good situation.
I like your idea of having a quarterly report stuff. I think it would be good for the board to know what Patrice is working on, so we, so that we can share this information with the residents and that, and that.
That's fair credit for what she's doing.
But it brings it to to your point. It, what it does, it, and I concur with you, what it does is is let every man, this is, this is where your dollars are going. This is why it's worth having that individual doing this, this work. And it's not, and and the difficult part of it is having people understand, it's just not this one category that this person does. It it's it's a rather multi, multifaceted thing. And um, you know, I'd be, I'd be happy to be her spokesman, but that's.
Are you looking to make a motion now?
I wish I could, but my brain won't allow me to do it.
What kind of motion?
Looking for quarterly reports?
Uh, well, let's run that by first.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, I guess we could make a motion.
But that's, that's already, that's already been. Patrice has already been told that's an expectation.
Okay, so she's already been told.
You don't, you don't need to make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, thank you, everybody, for your input on that. Uh, consider an act on applying for Amplify grant. That's not five thousand, so it's the five thousand that, uh, they're looking to.
Five thousand dollars, no match.
No match. Grant is with who?
Any downside to this, Jim?
This is the Prevention Council, right?
Grant that we've been applying for for three or four years and done so successfully. And allows them to do a lot of their programming, yet no cost to both.
We've approved a lot of expenses using this grant money.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion that we allow Ashley Pereira to apply for the grant through the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving.
Then so there's seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
So that's not a, it's not a Hartford Foundation for Public Giving.
That's the second one?
That's the second one, and the town has to apply because we are the fiduciary.
Okay, well.
I'm just, I am considering, if I may read what she wrote, I am considering the grant application for the twenty twenty five Bolton Greater Together Community Fund through the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving.
So there's two pages.
So there's, yeah, there's, there's two grants.
I don't see the second one.
There's a five thousand. She's considering, it doesn't pay how much formation on the. The Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, they give whatever they want. I don't think you apply for.
You asked for what, do you give the detailed description of what you would use it for, and it's gotta be for community good? So which one is the Amplify grant? Is it on page sixty?
That's the five thousand dollar grant.
So that's, okay, so that's the, the five thousand dollar one is the one that is suicide prevention, training attendance, tabling events, hosting a wellness fair.
Correct.
That's the Amplify one.
Right.
And then the, see, other one.
So, one second, that's the grant application. Who's it going, who's supplying the grant?
It's Amplify.
Oh, so Amplify gives grants to their own organizations, so to speak? Okay, that's where I was confused.
And the town would be the applicant.
I would then, at this point, make a motion that we uh, rescind the last motion. I'm gonna have to have a vote on that.
Now, second. Tim seconded on any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven, yes. And now we have a new motion to apply to the Bolton Prevention Council grant, or no, that, I'm not for the Bolton Prevention Council.
So this technically is not on our, on our agenda, I don't think. I, just pointing that out. The agenda talks about the Amplify grant. And it doesn't talk about the second one, the grant to the um, Hartford Foundation for.
Well, we just, we just rescinded that motion.
So, so, so.
They're only gonna vote on one tonight?
Yeah, this one here right now.
And we're not gonna vote on the Hartford Foundation ones, because it's not on the agenda.
Well, because I thought the two were one.
I did too, yeah.
Is there a timeframe on the Hartford?
I was just gonna ask. It's pretty soon, I think.
Are we gonna have more meetings before that? Let's just put it up at the next meeting.
Let's do the five.
Let's go, let's go, uh, I would make a motion that we
Apply for the five thousand dollars for the Amplify.
Is the town, Jim, if I might ask a question first, Jim, are we applying for the grant or is
We do.
The the town, Ashley will fill out the application, but it's actually the town's application. So she'll do most of the work, but Rodney and I will have to sign off on it.
Okay. I make a motion that we apply for the five thousand dollar grant from Amplify.
So other seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye, that's seven, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that we have the definite question of the funds to be applied for from the Bolton Greater Together Community Fund through the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, we put on the next agenda.
There are second.
In two weeks. You don't need, uh, just requesting.
Could you, could you repeat the motion? I couldn't hear her.
I'm sorry. It's just a request.
Request.
On the next agenda. For the Board of Selectmen. Further information about the twenty twenty five Bolton Greater Together Community Fund through the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving grant that Ashley Pereira has written about.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving forward, consider an act on two hundred fifty thousand dollar Parks and Rec grant. We don't have anything on that, do we?
Did you find out yet, uh, what we can do with that money?
We don't have a lot of information as of yet. Uh, I have requested the information and I asked Amanda to help me try to gather some information, so I suspect she's reached out also. All we know is that the Parks and Rec grant was something that Senator Rahman put in for us. And that um, there's not a lot of limitations because it is a legislative grant, there is no match. And now that we have gotten the grant, we actually have to apply for it. So I'm asking your permission to apply for that grant. So that we can receive the funds, and there's no match.
I would make a motion that we approve for Jim to submit for the two hundred fifty thousand dollar Parks and Rec grant.
I'll second your motion. About more seconds. Uh, is there any more discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm very confused. It sounds like this is a state grant from the back of the budget.
Correct.
It's not to, that he put in to be used for.
Parks and Rec.
Parks.
He, he, he was able to, yeah, request five hun- he requested five hundred thousand dollars for Bolton. So I was able to confirm with him that we are anticipating receiving two hundred and fifty thousand next year, in the next year of the biennium. That said.
Two hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty, is that what you're saying?
Right, for a total of five hundred, specifically for Parks and Rec. Um, not sure where the Parks and Rec came from, he, but he requested the same amount for us and um, Andover. That being said, I know they're going, I think they're having a special session, right? And given some of what's going on at the national level, I'm not sure if we want to rely on that two hundred and fifty being there next year or not. I guess my question is, Jim, in applying for the grant, do we have to say what we're applying for? Or we just literally say, please give us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, it it seems like it's very loose based on the information I've gotten so far.
Okay.
I'm very uncomfortable.
It it it's sitting there, right?
The the two fifty is definitely already allocated. It was allocated in the budget.
It was allocated for what?
Bolton Parks and Recreation.
And what does that mean?
That means we want to put a add at the top of forty four, so we gotta dig a trench and put a water line up there.
Uh, that was a, uh, that was a joke.
Yeah.
It's just for, for others that were listening in, the, because there's a water line passion by our, for selectmen that may concur with.
And.
Who, um, who asked for this money?
Nobody.
MD Rahman, Senator.
Who asked MD Rahman to put it in for us?
Nobody.
Nobody.
Jim, have you actually looked at the form that you have to fill out for the, the grant application?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and it doesn't say funds.
It is very, it is very nonspecific.
Who's, did the letter come from?
It came from somebody at DAS.
Department of Administrative Services, okay. And it doesn't say, like, where the money's coming from?
Not OPM?
No, it came from DAS. What we can use it for is not well defined. I think it's, I think it's very much open to interpretation. And I think, you know, that's, we have a lot of leeway as to what you think falls into Parks and Rec. And you have the ability to define that within the grant.
Is there a contract or an approval letter that has terms that we could review? And is there a time limit that would prevent us from reviewing that?
I don't, I don't know that there's a timeline. I just got the paperwork about a week ago, maybe ten days ago. Um, I can certainly send it out, but I don't think it's gonna be very enlightening.
My understanding is that this is basically an earmark.
I understand that. I'm very well aware what it means. Um, but usually there is something behind it. Somebody's looking for something for a ball field, somebody's looking for a track recircusing, somebody's looking for uh, repairs for a swimming pool. Um, it's usually, you, they go to the representative or senator with, say, help us find how to get this money, and then earmarks.
Does it have anything to do with the place grid of DCS?
So that was separate, that was a five hundred thousand dollar bond request that did not pass the bond commission, so that's something that could be considered for this money.
Is it expected to be considered?
I don't know if it could still come up or not.
Blatant questions like this, or no?
Let me ask, let me ask this question. Did Senator Rahman contact the first selectman?
Has he not yet? No.
And has he contacted?
That Andover got the same thing.
Mr. Rupert?
No, he has not contacted me.
I first sent what you're talking about. I agree. I had something else.
So Andover's got the same.
Thank you, sir. But I know it's a same.
Deal going with the two fifty, two fifty. And they didn't ask, as far as we know, they didn't ask for it either.
They did not. I don't, I know Senator Rahman did contact Eric over in Andover. And Eric is the one that told us about it. And he he did, I believe. Amanda, you had gotten some notification early on that this might be a possibility, if I recall, and um.
Yes, I told you guys when he called me.
Right. And I, once I heard from Eric Anderson over in Andover, I did reach out to Senator Rahman's office uh, and ask for some more specifics. And before I got those specifics, I got the information from AS.
Can I, just a question, if if um, the funds are there, so I, for me, uh, to approve it, I would like to approve it with a direction. If, you know, we, we, we'd like to uh, apply for these funds for this project. I mean, is it, is it something that we could utilize? I know we have.
I know we have the funds to build a new field, but we also need to work on the existing field over at, at Herrick Park. Is this something that? For, a, a, a set of funds that we could really put there and, and really be in great shape and, and. Really redoing that whole area, its recreation. I think it would be, but I don't know if. What two hundred fifty thousand dollars does as far as.
Yeah.
Working over there, so I asked that only because maybe. If, if we, uh, ask, at least that park and rec person, um.
I think, Bob, Mr. Moore, you're making a, a very valid, um, statement. You know, I, I, I'm always embarrassed when money comes through that wasn't asked for. Um, as a former legislator. I understand the intent to be, when there's excess money to hand it out, I know what that is. Um, but usually there's a project behind it, and, um, I would like to ask. That the makers of the motion withdraw their motion. The, in the wording that it is in, and say, and to bring it back to the next meeting and ask the. Administrator to give us some options as to what we would accept the money for.
If you look at your agenda, my suggestion is that we actually put a committee together to discuss this in a very public. Setting so that it's not just me and the rec director coming up with a group of ideas. So that we're really trying to serve the public need with this, these funds. And, uh, you know, put together a committee.
I, I would like to see us authorize Jim to apply for this money. It is, as long as Jim finds out whether these funds are restricted to particular uses. Because if they're, if they're unrestricted, then I don't see the harm in taking that money in. And then having this, I like this idea of a, of a community committee getting together to decide possible uses. But if Jim, I think Jim's got to do a little more digging to find out, because if, if this two hundred and fifty has to go for. You know, some, some purpose that we are not happy with, we shouldn't even be applying, but I, I, but I do think we should just move ahead. And apply for this money as long as there are not restrictions on, on the funds that we can't, that we don't want to accept.
Was that a motion?
Uh, there's a motion on.
Well, yeah, I still need to rescind mine, um.
All right, if I may go back again, Gwen. You'd rather, well, let me ask a question to Jim Rupert, is there a deadline in which they're at requiring or asking you to submit your paperwork?
No, not, not specifically. I mean, I think if you wanted to wait a couple meet weeks and try to get a little more information, we can. I, I'm just not sure if we're gonna come back with a lot more information. I mean, I think we can determine whether or not there are restrictions on the money. And my understanding at this point is that there really aren't any restrictions as long as it falls into those categories. Of supporting Parks and Rec.
Jim, do you think you could send the selectmen that, the application that you have to fill out?
It's, yeah, I can, it's, it's multiple pages, but I can certainly send that to you.
I bet you when the, the office calls you back, we'll probably have the answer. I mean, I, I suspect Pam's probably right, there's probably some intended project, whether it's the playground or something else, or whatever. That being said. In my ignorance, I don't see a downside to accepting the two fifty. I, I, I highly doubt there's gonna be some. Crazy quid pro quo where we have to, you know, do some indoctrinated thing in, in, you know, in exchange for this money, so.
Can, you want me to tell you how this works?
Yeah.
Jim and I.
I just said a mic, so.
Twenty-five each.
This is not a pot of money meant for all small towns to be able to apply. This is not money that's going into the steep grant, Small Town Economic Assistance Fund. This is a specially requested pot of money by one person. That is used from back of the budget money when there was some excess. To hand out money. I'm being blunt. I know what it is, I've seen it, I know why it's being done, it's not being done bipartisanly, that's to be clear.
Okay.
I'm being blunt again. Um, it's gracious that. The, someone thought of us and thought of Andover, the two of the smallest towns in the four-town district. However. It makes me very uncomfortable.
Why?
Because they didn't ask us what we wanted. So we have so many needs.
Yeah.
And so many projects going on right now. It's lovely to be offered some money, but. It's one track.
What's the downside, though? What's, what's the worst in your mind that, that could happen here?
I think it's embarrassing for the board. To be applying for money. With no project specifically accounted for, for it to be accounted to. Now, do we have something in particular that's different? And that, that's the conservative side of them. I don't believe in slush funds and, um, I believe it's, um. One of the embarrassing things, the way the state does their budget. And they dole out favors. If they said this is for those, the restoration of Herrick Park fields. But did he come and ask what we needed for? Would you like, and Amanda said that there was a look at for five hundred thousand, there was a look at, but to be split possibly in two years. Possibly get, and this is the first year of a biennial budget, so the hope is that it'll still be there for next year.
Yeah.
But we don't know.
So there's probably some political motivation behind it, there, you know. Crack giving it out, that's fine, so, and I understand the embarrassment, that's a great point on the slush fund, it's an irresponsible way to operate the budget.
But we're not gonna fix that. We approve it or?
And, and then on the flip side, it would be pretty irresponsible to, I mean, just on principle to. Not reject the money when there are grassroots folks that are trying to make improvements to the town, which I suspect that's what.
But I believe we have a responsibility to look at where we would put this money instead of say.
We have time to do that? Do you suggest that we don't make the motion now and we do it at, at the next forum, a little committee and?
I think the board member, the board could form a, a subcommittee to look at what are the options for it? And we have, then can come back to the rest of the board and say. These is, this is where we could use this money, let's apply for it. It's a quarter of a million dollars.
Can we accept it with a future designation to be determined by the board? And the board alone to specify where the, where the money goes?
You could do that, but that.
Would that be satisfactory or not really?
I don't believe that's clear and transparent government.
What do you recommend the best plan of action would be?
I believe that we should go back and look at where we could use two hundred fifty thousand dollars and then apply for it with a reason.
Okay.
And we were applying, it says, we want this money for this, regardless of why they said they're giving it to us.
Is there any time limit, Jim?
They said no.
Okay, so far. I will rescind my motion.
No, I'm going back to where, where I was.
He's rescinding his motion, we need to rescind this.
I rescind the motion to apply for the grants immediately.
And I'll go back to where, where my comments were, simply to, um, I, I'd like some recommendations to come forward from our Park and Rec department. So at least we have a basis. And I'll say, all right, we'd like to apply for this, we can always modify it if, as things change, but you. It, it should be for, at least folks know that, that, there is, there is a project that we've been meaning, we've been meaning to do this project forever. And simply didn't have the funds for it. And, um, to me, that's, that would be, I would key in that project, it might be the other one, but I'd like to, just to talk with. Or, you know, have, have, uh, our first selectman and, and Jim talk with our buildings and grounds person. Because he has a better handle on what's there and what's more immediate, and, and, uh.
Yeah, and if. And there is a, if, if there is somebody that asks for this for a specific thing, then tell us that, right? I mean.
Well, yeah.
Be, be upfront and clear about it.
So, so I just say.
Otherwise we use it for something else.
So I'd like, I'd, so I, I just as soon have, wait, wait to, uh, make the motion to accept it until we get a, a feedback at. If, if Mr. First Selectman's mind from you and, and, and Jim and, and our, our buildings and grounds as to, uh. A, a suggested use for it.
Amanda's got.
I'm sorry, initiate Andover.
Thanks, I, I do want to be clear that, you know, Senator Roman was approached by the group working, and I'm not saying that this is the project that it should be used on, but. From the perspective of Senator Roman, right, he was approached by the group working on trying to make the, the. Playscape at B C S fully handicapped accessible, he was aware that the amount was five hundred thousand dollars. That is the amount that he did ask for, he contributed five thousand dollars of his personal money towards that project, so that could have been. The project that was in the back of his mind when he requested this money from the state. That said, it is open, right? I'm assuming he didn't want to put any type of. You know, parameters around it to make it as flexible for us as possible as a board to be able to use it where we thought and the community thought it was a, a, the best fit. So, just for that context.
Are you talking about the school project?
The handicap playground?
They're trying to convert the, yeah.
Have gone, wouldn't that have gone through educational grant funding?
No, I think they're privately doing that, aren't they?
They are trying, right now they are trying to privately do it, they were working with M D to try and get bonding money, but he may have also seen this as an alternative route to get money for that project.
You think he may have made an error putting the grant to the town versus the grant to the school?
It's not a school project, it's a private.
It's also not on school property, it's on town property.
It's on town property.
Because it's on the veterans' field.
Right.
Correct. They did come, I don't know, Pam, were you here when they came into the presentation?
Amanda, I'm sorry.
Were you here when the group came into the presentation for us? On the proposed project?
They did a PowerPoint. There were about, like, ten, there were about ten representatives.
Yes, I was.
Okay, yeah, her son is in a wheelchair. So it's that project.
So it's, it's that group that's doing it, okay.
And I just thought they had that permission from us and that it was a school project, like, and my ecology's.
Yeah, right. Okay, any. So is that what it's for?
So, well, that's, well, that.
Can we just say some stuff out loud?
That's why.
That's why I'm asking these questions.
It's important to get that feedback.
From him, right?
Yeah, so, so we'll know, and, and also give Jim and, and Rodney a chance to.
I would support.
Dig into it, get back to it so we can.
This could be very.
Cause I'd like to target it, frankly.
If we reply for the money and then we go to put it into, gonna rehab Herrick Park and it's an oops, he meant for it to go to this. Handicap project, that would be very.
Well, the town might be a little upset about that, wouldn't they?
Well. It will be embarrassing to us as a board.
Yeah.
Without knowing exactly where it should go.
Yeah.
So let's do a little more research and, and fact finding and, um.
Okay.
We should have done.
So we put this in the right, we want to make sure it goes in the right pocket. So.
Yes, day before day.
I'll meet with Jim and John and, and see what's going, see what's going.
And, and then, and have a conversation with.
The Senator.
Senator Roman.
Yes.
And in conjunction with the new superintendent of schools, perhaps.
Uh, well, I don't think the school's listed anywhere. On anything.
Amanda, what's the name of the group that's, that was a product?
I don't remember, I mean, it's been on social media lately because they've been doing lemonade stands and stuff to raise money.
Oh, yeah. All the time.
That's why I was going to ask the superintendent those questions.
The, the question of what?
The school has nothing to do with it.
No, no, no.
They know about it, right?
Yeah, oh yeah, but it's.
Because they need a, they'd have a, they'd want approval for the right appropriate playground equipment.
But it's town property, so they needed our, they wanted, the, the board gave permission for them to move forward with the project, that's. They needed our permission, not the board's, not the school's permission.
I am, okay, well, that's another discussion.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, further discussion, it'll be brought back to the board again. For additional review.
Yes, please.
Uh, consider an act on forming ad hoc advisory committee for the Parks and Rec Grant. Seems we're not doing it.
Well, hold on that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Very good, we'll put that on hold. Uh, ongoing business.
Wait, why would we put that on hold? Don't we want to discuss it? Isn't this the time to discuss it before we accept it?
We're going to have the administration do some, bring it back some.
Preliminary.
Thank you.
Cause we don't even know what it can be used for. Consider an act and possibly act on Vernon. Quarry Road intersection. So we're, Jim Rupert met with.
It's, this is seven A in our packet.
Joe Dillon, town engineer regarding the traffic safety issues on Vernon Road. And they recommend the following actions, realign the intersection of Vernon and Quarry Road to make it a three-way stop. Uh, this would, should force traffic to stop before entering the section from Vernon between Quarry and Route forty-four. Install speed humps on the section of Vernon Road between Quarry Road and Route forty-four to slow traffic. In that congested neighborhood and add signage as needed to help enforce the speed limits in that corridor. So that was the recommendation of Jim Rupert and Joe Dillon.
Signage.
What's the, um, estimated cost of that, of the design and then with construction, implementation of that?
Uh, so we are considering possibly act on Vernon Quarry Road. Are we acting on, uh, designing it or are we acting on actually doing the work? Jim?
You, you have to do the design first, that will require a little bit of survey and some realignment of the intersection. And the estimate that I received for the, um, for the engineering work for that was around seven thousand dollars.
So are we just looking to approve the seven thousand dollars to get the engineering work done? So we can get a proposed cost?
Well, I'd like, I'd like to be able to get the engineering work done and then be able to plan the project. You know, I think the project could be done either with already approved funding. Or it could be done with Town Aid Road Funds because it's an acceptable project, uh, under Town Aid Road. So we have a couple of possible funding sources. But I'd like to be able to get the engineering, uh, underway here over the winter so that we'd be in a position to potentially. Uh, move forward with the work next summer.
Well, can I make it a two-part motion then?
Okay.
A motion that we approve the dollars needed for the engineering of this project. On the. Area of. Quarry Road and Vernon Road.
Uh, is there a second? I, I'll second it because that, that, that realignment, that whole, the whole, uh, project there is, is. Signi- it's a significant issue up there, significant traffic problem, significant safety problem. And we, we should be acting on it. Uh, is there any other discussion?
There is.
Yes.
Do we have any speed homes elsewhere in the town?
No. Oh, yeah, I, yes, Sandy.
Thanks, Rodney. Um, Sandra Pierrot, Brandy Street. I'm opposed to speed bumps anywhere in town, I think it's a dangerous precedent. Um, you'll soon get requests from Brandy Street, Loomis Road, Heburn Road, Tanglewood Lane. Um, and lots of, Bulky Road, lots of other towns where people believe there's speeding and. Stand in my front yard, you'll see town vehicles, fire department vehicles, school vehicles, um. School buses, all exceeding the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, and I would love to see ten speed bumps on Brandy Street. But I don't think it's the right answer for the town of Bolton, so please very, very carefully consider. What the effect of putting speed bumps on Quarry Road will do.
On Vernon Road.
I'm sorry?
On Vernon Road.
I'm sorry.
Along the lake.
And, and Quarry Road will ask for the same thing for there.
Thank you for clicking something in back of my mind back on again, because. Because I, uh, quite frankly, I've had that same discussion. And I I kind frankly, I can, I concur with with Sandy had to say and and um I I would approve the motion without that portion of of the.
I have to say that I I agree, but our job is to bring you the information and let you have the discussions.
Okay. So, um I would, you know, withdraw the motion and and did I make the motion, do you make it?
No, don't withdraw the motion.
No. Well, we'd like to make an exception.
Okay, good, well. But I want I want to, uh, just the first part of the motion is to to approve the the study, the engineering. Without the uh looking into adding the speed bumps, speed humps, or whatever they're called.
I will, I will amend my motion then to say that we would like the engineering to be done with a three-way stop.
Yep, that's that's it. Uh, is there?
Vernon and Quarry Road.
Is there a second?
Pam, I'll second, simple.
Does the signage need to be included or is that? That doesn't need to be, does the signage need to be included or not?
Well, this is just for good.
Okay.
It's a design.
Taking that down.
I don't know, no, when you go for funds, I don't know if they have to be on a plan, plan in the intersection, you know?
This is for the engineering design.
It's just for engineering design because that would probably be factored in anyways.
And then when you have to use funds, you can just use both funds, whatever you want.
Yes.
So which budget is this, would this be coming out of and are we okay? Are we, do we have enough funds to handle this? We, we're, I know we're starting off a new fiscal year after a very difficult budget season.
Know on that road.
Budget season. Yeah, well, you go.
This comes out, this this comes out of professional and technical in the administration budget. And yes, we have enough funding for that.
And 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 as Jim noted, um, Town Aid Road, once you get a design and those funds would be eligible to to make those improvements if we, if the board so desired to utilize them. And I think, Sandra, thank you for clicking my mind back on again. And I think the speed bumps are necessary on that portion of the road. So, uh, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed besides me? That's six yes, one no.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a second motion that the engineering, there be part of the engineering study to include speed humps.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. One yes. All six nos, motion doesn't pass. Was that fun?
No, I like when we don't agree.
She changed my mind.
I think so, really.
An opportunity to be able to vote for it.
Right, oh, yeah.
Who is the, Pam or Rodney?
Rodney was the yes.
I was the yes on the second motion.
I thought you said you were opposed to the speed bumps.
I am, yes, on the first motion, I'm a no.
And the second motion loses. He wants the homes.
Right, I mean, there's not many places in town where your, where your driveway and your mailbox are ten feet off your house. Cars are doing forty, fifty miles an hour. So, and if the road's only twenty feet wide, not even, but, but, okay, moving on. Uh, review engineering schedule from Joe Dillon. Uh, if anybody has any questions on this, uh, it was asked of me to to get a schedule.
Did we get it?
Yep, it's in there.
So seventeenth, I would like to thank uh you for going after that, Mr. Fornier, Mr. Rithard. Um and passing the cabinet off. I thank you. Good night.
Good night. Uh Pam was thanking.
Everybody for going after, for obtaining the status report for us, very helpful.
Is there any questions on it?
For those that are, do not have it in front of them, it it reviews the Lori Road Drainage Repairs, Herrick Park issues, community septic, uh, that we have this deep grants, uh, the uh yeah, it was steep grant for, uh, the Heritage Farm Trail work, the Brandy Street Drainage and the Steel's Crossing Russell.
Okay, so moving on. Approval minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. That was an AP Selectment meeting.
I'll second.
That was Mather seconded, is there any discussion?
All the fastest meetings you've ever had, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I don't think I was there, so I'm abstaining.
Okay, so we had three abstains, uh, Amanda, Tim and Gwen. Uh, motion passed with four yes.
Who else is abstaining? I've got Amanda and Gwen and, oh, Mather?
Sadler.
Oh, Sadler, all right, thank you.
Uh, now for the August nineteenth, special meeting.
I was not present, so I will not be making the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting.
Is there a second?
Yes, Bob Moore seconded.
Bob Moore seconds, uh, is there any discussion?
I wasn't there, that's right.
Oh, Bob wasn't there, it's just.
I'll second it.
All right, Gwen seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I, yeah, Sawyer abstained.
Yeah, Bob Moore abstained. And Amanda is abstaining? She's a yes, okay, so it's five yes, Pam and Bob are abstaining.
We're good.
And then meetings from August twenty-sixth.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to review except for minutes to August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, the worst left man AP meeting.
Um.
Ten seconds.
Was Tim there? Tim was, was there by Zoom.
Zoomed.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm abstaining because I came in at the very, very end.
Oh, that's right. That was our second fastest meeting, um. Uh, motion passed with six yes and Amanda abstaining. Uh, and then we move on to reports and updates. There any discussion on the financial side of things?
Is there anything unexpected, Mr. Rupert?
Well, things, things are looking uh okay. I talked with a tax collector today. And for the first tranche of tax bills that went out, she's at about ninety-four percent collection rate. The rest of the tax bills, she's going to try to get those uploaded by the end of the week so that people can actually see what their second installments on real estate will be. What their personal property tax will be and their motor vehicle. And the tax bills are actually scheduled to go out, I think, the following week. Uh, and although tax, those tax bills are due on October first, they won't be late until either November first or second. Um so we are, we are doing okay with the amount of money we have in the bank. We are no longer in dire need of funding to avoid having um to pay fees and not get interest.
Very good.
On the, I just had a question on the, on the third sheet that's labeled FY twenty twenty-five. But there's a unexpended amount, the six hundred and ten thousand eight hundred eighty-four and forty. Is is that the amount that was not spent from last year's budget? Is that what that number means?
To to date, that would be accurate.
But this is uh, okay, but so so this sheet though is as of the end, the fiscal year ending June thirtieth. Correct?
Correct.
Of twenty twenty-five, okay, so so when you say as of that date, that means that as of.
There are still bills coming in from last fiscal year.
Okay, so there, so this.
That number's going to shrink.
Okay, by by around, but the once we get all those bills paid, then there will be a number at the bottom of this column that'll show us what was not spent from from last year's budget.
Right, that would be, and that will be an unordered amount until last year goes through its audit. And it'll get further adjusted during the audit.
Okay, and then where is that money going that's was not spent through?
It 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 just stays in the general fund.
Okay, so it gets rolled over.
And part of that was factored in 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 setting the the actual uh mill rate as as anticipated funds that were going to be returned back. So a portion of that is already factored in. And I honestly, unless I look back at the budget, I can't recall what those numbers were.
Okay, so there was, the finance committee actually took a number, but this is what we're applying.
Correct, and we did it for both the our budget and and the Port of Edge budget. So those, so they'll show that amount, but yeah, those funds remain in in the town's coffers and as an offset to this year's tax bill.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And we also use that information when we're looking at building the next budget to look at areas where we can potentially tighten things up a little bit.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Uh, so last but not least, there's reports, uh, do you want me to? Anybody have any questions on these? The street light on the corner of Bolton Center Road has been put up. And what road is that?
Somewhere.
No, not right before you go by the.
Yeah, I, um.
I don't know what it is.
Old Bolton.
Old Bolton Road, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh let's see, is there any?
Yeah, I do have one question. It's, uh, let's see, where is that? Um, it's maybe a third of the way down. Heritage Farm Trail Plan was submitted to DOT for review. They requested revision. So Jim, what revisions did they request?
They they wanted, um well, they weren't really specific in their revisions. What they said was the trail is ending nowhere. Um, so we talked with with Crog about possible solutions and the possible solutions that came up were to put a small uh area of parking at the bottom of the trail and put a, put a crossing over to Brandy Street as was requested by the public during the public informational meeting.
That, that, that second item, it is going to take huge amount of engineering and construction. Because if you remember what the plan showed like a fifty-foot long piece of pipe in that stream running down, because there's a big, there's a big distance between that where the trail is proposed to end and Brandy Street. And to get people from the end of the trail down to right across from Brandy Street, that that's that's going to be a very expensive part of that, of that project. So I just, I just hope that something, that that is looked at very carefully. And I think that I mean, if you don't, if if people cross that street also going to Brandy Street, there's no trail planned for Brandy Street. So where, where are they going to go? It would be just the same as having them right now, walking down the edge of Steel's Crossing and then turning and walking on Brandy Street. There's, there's no difference. So I just.
I would, I would, I would agree with ninety-nine percent of that. What I would say is, we do have a plan for a trail down Brandy Street. It's just an eventual plan, not a current plan. Um, and part of, part of this is that uh, construction estimates have to go into uh, the discussion and the Board of Selectmen will get to look at this again. You know, you were, you've approved this specific plan. And this is a change that DOT is requesting to the plan, so this comes back to the board. If they accept this, uh, this comes back to the board with the schematic plan, if you will, along with the uh, the cost estimate. So you get to look at this again.
So are you submitting revisions prior to the board seeing it?
The revisions were submitted to Crog last week.
So then the DOT will accept it and then we get to look at it?
If the DOT accepts it, you'll get to look at it, yeah.
Amanda?
I was just, I mean, I I mean, I guess if the revisions were already submitted, it's it's null and void, but I was just going to say, could it be as easy as putting up a sign at the end of the trail that says, follow the street to get to the Steel's Crossing pathway or go left to get to the Rose Trail? Like, you know?
Tried that, I tried that.
Oh, okay.
The answer was.
That was too, that was too practical, simple solution.
So Jim, the revision that you submitted has is, has that fully engineered pipe in the brook with the cover over it?
No, no, it really is just a, it's, it's just a, it really is just a simple plan. It's not fully engineered, no.
Okay.
Uh, is there any other comments anybody wants to make on the?
I have a question related to that.
Yeah.
Um just curious, I know, sorry to make you talk a lot, Jim, but since we're talking about the trail, I mean what is the grant slash steps necessary to pursue the Brandy Street connection? I'm assuming it would be the connectivity grant, but is there work that needs to be done soon in order to apply for the next round of that? When would that be?
So I think we discussed this as a board and we made a conscious decision to end the trail where we did because of money constraints. Um, and and that really is a big piece of it, plus there was a lot of, uh, there was a lot of public opposition to that section. And, um, you know, it would take more discussion with the public to try to get that to be approved. But I think the biggest part, the biggest part of it really was financial constraints because the first part of the trail uh is significantly more expensive than originally, originally thought.
So do we give, uh, let me ask you a different way. I understand that it was the money is the reason on paper that we didn't do it. Are we saying that people just don't want it? And we're gonna.
There was, there was, I think, I think. I think there was a mixture when we had the public informational session. I think we had, we had more than one. Um, and there was a mixture of people who were in favor of it and it was, and some who were not in favor of it. And I think the other piece of your question originally was, what do we need to do if we want to apply for another grant in the future for that section? We've already laid the groundwork for that. That information is not going to go away. So that, you know, that bare bones design is already done and would require just updating. And if the standards change, we would have to update the standards and we would have to update the cost estimate. So it would be a fairly easy lift to reapply for another grant at some point to continue that trail from the Brandy Street intersection to the high school.
When do those grants come back around?
Um, there's, there's usually grants that are available almost every year for that kind of thing. And in particular, this was a low SIP grant through the, which is being administered by the Capital Region Council of Governments. And this is something that the town of Bolton had not applied for in the past. And so we were, they were actually very excited to receive our application for this project.
Well, I would encourage us to consider opening that back up for a discussion. Um, I would also listen to any opposition to it, but it sounds like there's an obstacle to a pretty cool project and that just means that there's solutions waiting to be found, so.
Understood.
Any other? No, I just got a question. Yeah, on that project, my, my solution was rebuild the road, make the road four feet wider. And we, we put a, um, a marked off walking area right in the road. That, that, that sounds, because that road has significant drainage issues all the way up. As Sandy is, she has a pond in front of her yard half a year. And and it, but, uh, I think when we had looked, the original plan, we had dealt with it partially. Uh, but by shifting and going over. If if the board were to look at this again, I would like the board to really look at that whole strip of road. Making, just reconsider this thing as, as a, as a true safety project, redoing the road, widening the road all the way up. Just having a, an area, a walk area along that side. It'll, you can deal with all the drainage issues and.
It'll, you can deal with all the drainage issues and to me that, that would be.
Are there grants available for that too?
Well, you'd probably have to do a multiple thing tied this in with something else. But I mean, I mean, if you're going to, after going through the other discussions on, on what was there, well, the pros and cons, and, and just putting the pathways. The, the, the further we got into this thing, the more, at least for me, I realized that, you know, we're, we're looking at this picture instead of this picture. And, and, and I right now can frankly see it as the bigger picture of just correcting that whole strip of road all the way up to the high school. And, and that takes care of multiple needs. Safety issues, uh, you know, the, that, that, that road has no shoulders on either side, the whole thing. Uh, and dealing, you know, yeah, you're going to have to put money aside to do it. But when you do it, you're going to have something that's going to be, that's going to benefit everybody. Not just those who want to use a walking trail. So that's, that's just my thought on this thing. And, and it, and, and I know it's not cheap, but sometimes you, you have to plan and, and, and do it till it works. Not just for one, that works for a lot.
We're lucky it's a pretty slow and low usage road because I mean, I, I'm crossing the yellow line to give people space. Cause it's extremely dangerous to get, especially given that there's high school kids looking at their phones driving. I mean, it sucks that somebody die.
That, well, that's my point. I said, you know, I, I think it's a bigger issue than just a pathway. I, but, but you can solve two things with one solution.
One project.
One project.
Every 10 feet.
Whatever it is, I mean, I'll, I'll let, I'll let a contractor guy come with that.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate you entertaining.
The question, uh, Jim, in your report that says quite a bit is happening at the Bolton Center, Bolton Center Cemetery. Building work on the mapping. Is there, what other work is happening there?
Um, our, our part-time employee who takes care of the cemetery has just done an amazing job. And she's been clearing the fence line of all of the ivy and everything else that's growing on it. I do know we've got a couple more trees that have died that we've got to cut down. I think you saw us earlier this year, this calendar year, get the stone wall repaired. We are looking at, um, you know, some less costly repairs in the future. So there's actually quite a bit that's happening. Plus, we're working with quite a few families to try to identify um, where people are buried where they don't have grave markers, which is always challenging.
Thank you for that update.
You're welcome. And I must say, they look phenomenal. Best they've looked in years.
It was, one of the best decisions we made was to go to an employee rather than a private contractor. We are saving money and we are taking what was complaints and turn them into compliments.
Um, I had an opportunity to see that employee, uh, in action and see her stop, uh, and park and be respectful for a graveside burial. Um, bedside service. It was, it was very well done.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Okay, I'll move return. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before we get into another discussion.
Yep.
Who's second?
Ready for tonight, Amanda? Good night, Amanda.